Ready, Mr. Norman?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council's legislative session. Today is January 19, 2021. I welcome all the residents back and Happy New Year to everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Petroski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green. Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you. Ms. Green is excused for this evening. We now move on to the invocation. Mr. Allitt.
Thank you. I'd like to first start out by asking if we could keep the family of Mr. Charles Wallace in our prayers. He passed recently. In addition to a close friend and former city council member Susan Brown Wilson, she also lost her husband last week. If we could also keep her and their entire family in her thoughts and prayers. Certainly unexpected tragedy. In the midst of all that, we still exist within a pandemic that has taken more than 400,000 Americans' lives in the last year, and there's no end in sight to that. So please, if we could keep the thoughts of anyone who's lost someone due to COVID, who is currently ailing from COVID. And lastly, we are experiencing a historic day tomorrow in a transition of power to a new administration. And so whether you are the praying type or the one that keeps thoughts close to you, President-elect Biden and Vice President-elect Harris have a huge job on their hands to take over and manage our nation through the next steps, through the pandemic and healing and all of those things. So as we just pause for a moment, whether you're the praying type or just one of the keeping thoughts, let's do that right now. You can bag your heads for just a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allitt. We now move on to the pledge allegiance. Mr. Majors.
Okay. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. We now move on to communications. Mr. Woolley, I see you are on. Is Ms. Williams going to do a quick presentation tonight or our update? Hello? Yes.
Yeah, not 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 tonight.
Okay, should be next week. Ms. Bowers said. Oh, thank you so much. We now move on to courtesy of the floor. Mr. Petroski, do you have anyone who would like to speak to city council?
I do believe I do believe we have a few attendees. If there's anybody interested in joining in on public participation, could you please raise your hand? You are now unmuted. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Kimika Campbell. I'm in Shypoke, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to read my comment. I did submit it as well. I got a great message back. Thank you, letting me know that you could be good calling tonight, so I appreciate that. Dear elected officials of Harrisburg City Government, welcome back. Harrisburg residents are anxiously looking forward to how you will work for us this year. While many residents strongly disagree with many of your positions and some of the actions you take on our behalf, especially the mayor's, I do believe that residents may our voices heard in 2020. We will continue to do so in 2021. I beseech all of you never again to complain about how about resident involvement, especially because many of you, particularly and especially City Council President Wanda Williams and the current mayor, but not for long, Eric Papinfus, made it very difficult for all of us in 2020. We stepped up and showed you that we are listening and we want to be involved. Will our elected officials make it easier for us in 2021 for to be involved? We choose to believe that you will. Please don't disappoint us. And I'd like to amend my statement to say thank you very, very much for allowing us to be involved in this way this evening. For 2021, we are looking forward to hearing about how you will address our city's housing crisis, the continued pandemic, joblessness in the city, gentrification, the coming Community Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, this new and already wanting community safety program and other issues affecting residents. We will be listening, watching, recording and participating. And lastly, I want to extend a personal thank you to all of the neighborhood organizations that mobilize to educate the community about the appropriate and most beneficial use of emergency and police services. Thank you for the open letters that you wrote to our various neighborhoods. You all make Harrisburg better. Most notably, I would like to thank the Shypoke Neighborhood Association, the Midtown Action Council, Friends of Midtown, Camp Curtain Neighborhoods United, Riverside United Neighbors, South Allison Hill Homeowners and Residents Association, Capital Area Neighbors, Harrisburg Neighborhood Preservation Committee and the Harrisburg, the Historic Harrisburg Association. But sadly, and I'm so sad to report this, the mayor has lied to the community once again. He is on record in the last part of 2020 stating that if community organizations reached out to him, he would hear them out about community issues. One of the community organizations, the Shypoke Neighborhood Association, that reached out to him over a month ago has yet to hear from him. This is the kind of aloof, disrespectful and disconnected treatment that the mayor continues to levy at residents. We call on city council to collectively address and condemn his behavior immediately. He cannot continue to ignore residents at his convenience. Thank you so much and have a great meeting.
Mr. Petroski, anyone else?
Thank you. We have another attendee. Would you, is anyone else interested in participating in public comment? Please raise your hand if so. That is all for public comment.
Well, thank you, Mr. Petroski. Moving on to.
Hold on. President Williams, I did receive an email, and I don't know if Kirk has received it from a resident who wanted, whose comments we need to, would like to have read during the public comment. And I can read that if Kirk, if you don't have that, it's from, hold on, Linda K. Mac.
Yeah, unfortunately, the council president has my computer right now, so I'm on my.
Okay, no problem.
If you had that information.
I can read it. Yep, I can read it then. Okay. All right. It says, "Good day all. Last week, I received a visit at my home from Madam City Council President Wanda Williams. She informed me that the entire sidewalk from her street to Cumberland Street would be replaced. Praise God. She advised me that it would dig down, cut the roots, therefore eradicating the continued growth. I can live with that. There are branches high up that need to be professionally removed. I had to replace three front, excuse me, three front windchills three times of my car because of rotten dead limbs on that tree falling. I greatly appreciate everyone's efforts to address my tree situation. I did advise my neighbors about the great news and they were so excited. I am elated to everyone, EAC, Public Works, City Council and all others involved. I'm so grateful and appreciative. Their strength in numbers. Thank you, Linda M. K. Mac." And that is a resident of North 16th Street in Harrisburg.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. And, Mr. Majors, I do have to meet with you sometime next week to sit down and discuss some concerns with, you know, the public works and how we will continue on with the tree removal for our residents, if you don't mind.
Oh, I don't mind. I'm aware. I am aware of some of those issues.
Okay, thank you. Also, we did, I did meet with a, another individual on the 1900 block of Harrisburg who will, who also has a problem with the sidewalk and a tree removal. And she is a senior assistant, so I'll probably forward that information to you as soon as I can. Moving on to group of minutes, council members, did you have an opportunity to look at the proof of the special legislative session minutes of December 10, 2020? Is there any admissions, deletions or corrections that I need to make? Hearing nine minutes will stand approved. We now move on to reports of committees. There is none this evening. We now move on to ordinance and first reading, Bill 1 of 2021. Mr. Petroski, please read that into record.
Sure. Bill 1 of 2021 is an ordinance authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an agreement of sale with Manufacturers of Traders Trust Company for the purpose of acquiring the real property and improvements thereon located at 1002 North 7th Street in the city of Harrisburg, further authorizing the negotiation and entering into of a lease agreement for the purpose of continued operation of an onsite cash dispensing machine.
Thank you. That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. We now move on to ordinance for amendment. We have none this evening. We move on to ordinance for final passage, and we have none. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 1 of 2021. Mr. Petroski, please read it into record.
Resolution 1 of 2021 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Marathon Capital Strategies LLC for the purpose of providing financial advisory services to the city.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance, but I need a motion to suspend the rule so we can discuss that resolution.
President Williams, if I may, if you want to have the city clerk go ahead and read Resolution 2 into the record and then suspend the rules to discuss both of those at one time, that would be appropriate as well. Your call.
Okay. Please read Resolution 2 of 2020 into record as well.
Sure. Resolution 2 of 2021 is a resolution approving the first proposed 2021 budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations and authorize the roll forward of certain 2020 budget year commitments.
Thank you. And that also would place the Budget and Finance Committee. I now need a motion to suspend the rules, please.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for discussion of Resolution 1 of 2021 and Resolution 2 of 2020.
Thank you. I need a second. Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Mr. Allitt, would you like to begin the discussion on Resolution 1 of 2021, please?
Let's start with Resolution 1. I saw that, oh, there is. You moved on the screen, Dan. I see that Dan is here with us. Do we start with Dan? Mayor, do you have anything you want to lead off with in the discussion of this resolution prior to Dan?
No, I think Dan is quite capable of presenting it. Thank you.
All right, Dan, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you for having me this this evening. It's good to see you all again. I saw a good bit of you during the budget season. You know, we have provided the city a draft proposal, engagement letter to extend our engagement, which would really be our pleasure to continue working with the city. The primary activities involved in the engagement letter that we intend to undertake during 2021 would be supporting the city's efforts to complete the deal that we negotiated with AMBAC through all of 2020. The city approved the entering in, proved the term sheet in the December meeting. The draft amended settlement agreement is being drafted as we speak by AMBAC. We hope to have a copy of that draft pretty soon, and hopefully that will send in the motion, all the other court approvals and so forth. We need to complete the deal. Marathon has also been providing general financial consulting services, especially as the city's finance department has had some attrition and turnover in some of the senior positions. Work, we've been working closely with Mark Lawley in particular on mid-year reports, budget development, projections, general financial analysis, which would be included in this engagement. We'd also be continuing our support in helping the city develop its five-year plan, financial plan that's required as part of the requirements for the ICA. We are currently in the, there's a draft five-year plan that's outstanding now. We can plan on updating that draft in 2021 and submitting it as appropriate. And finally, you know, our services would include, hopefully, walking or managing the city through the transaction process for to refinance existing debt, in particular, the AMBAC forbearance liability with the extension of the city's extraordinary taxing powers. It puts the city in a much stronger credit position where it is very likely Harrisburg will be able to refinance its forbearance liability that is accruing interest at 6.75% right now and costing the city taxpayers a lot of money. And the city should be able to refinance that for pretty substantial debt service savings. And we hope to be able to execute that in 2021 as well.
Thanks, Dan. So I was looking at the terms and I see that the contract for 2022 would be our $135,000. And if I'm reading the second clause, does that include an option then for renewal for a second year at the $75,000 rate? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
That's, that's correct. And that the $75,000 has been what our contract amount has been each year up until this year. This year, we expect a decent amount more activity, particularly if there's a refinancing involved. You know, in having conversations with Mr. Lawley, it's seemed like an appropriate thing to do to have an extension option in there that would go back to what our previous amount was.
Gotcha. Okay. And that option for renewal would occur at what point? It would be like this time next year? Is that fair? Okay. And the only reason I point that out is because it's an election year for us. So you will, you could get a new mayoral administration, you get new council. So that is something that could change. So I always like to make sure that we don't extend what we do now to another administration and council that you might want to make, to weigh in on the decision making as well.
So my thought process with that was if we are going, especially if we're entering into negotiations to refinance our debt later on in the year, didn't want to put us in a position where we'd have to stop and negotiate a contract with Marathon, this is really to Gerder, the finance department, later on in the year, in the in the anticipation of entering a deal to refinance our debt. It seemed appropriate to have that option there in this situation. And also because of, you know, we're in the middle of recruiting for two major positions in finance and having Marathon there to Gerder the staff and me seemed appropriate.
I will, I'm going to extend it to my colleagues for questions. I'm going to go in order of the dais as we're sitting there and start with, to be my right, with Councilmember Daniels.
I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Majors.
No, no questions.
Council President. You don't need yourself, ma'am.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to tour the building, so, but I still have one question. The ATM, the maintaining of the ATM, I understand that the. Pardon me?
Talking about the contract with Marathon.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm going the wrong one. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. No, no questions. I was on the wrong thing. I was on a disputed resolution. Sorry.
Councilmember Madsen.
No questions for me. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. I can make the recommendation for us to move this to vote when we come back into session in a few minutes from now. Thanks for being here, Dan.
Thank you.
I mean, move on to Resolution 2 of 2021, and this deals with, let me switch to that screen here, the first budget adjustment allocation for the year. And this is an annual event for us because this is dealing with the encumbrances coming from 2020, and we've got bills to pay. So I want to turn that over. Mayor, are you leading this? Or Mark, are you leading this discussion and just reviewing the encumbrances for this year?
Mark can lead.
All right, Mark, I'll defer over to you. Do you want to just give us an overview of this?
So what, gonna have Brian run through this resolution and go over what our new process was that we worked out with the controller as well in terms of extending the the ability of departments to spend their budget until later in the year. But Brian, if you could.
And actually, this is a good, before you start talking, Brian, sorry to interrupt. This is great because this is something that I know that Charlie had been working on and wanting to work towards for some period of time. So I'm very appreciative that you guys were able to work this out for us this year because I think it made it a much smoother process.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chair Allitt. Good evening, President Williams, council members. Happy New Year. Yes, in, in starting with this, we always plan our year-end work to include a review and analysis of those open encumbrance balances. And they affect just about all our funds. You could see on the, on the schedule for the proposed, in the proposed amendment column, you can see the breakdown of the funds ranging from the general fund on down through neighborhood services and the special funds as well. The liquid fuels fund and the host fee fund are also involved. The biggest items that are occurring on this would, not surprisingly, there's the, the general fund and the capital projects fund, the first two lines. Of course, the general fund houses the majority of the city's budget units. And the capital projects fund, as you're aware as well, we have several streets, several ongoing streets and roads projects that tend to drift over the course of one to two years, sometimes even a bit more. But leading up to this, we wanted to clarify with, with our department and with the Controller's Office, the idea of the roll forward. It's always been a bit confusing because I think in the last several years, we tend to look at our capital items, our capital expenditures. But in working with Mark this time and, and our staff, I thought it would be better to say that, you know, all of our expenditures are equally as important, whether it's capital, services, supplies. So what we're doing this time is, is we're requesting for your review and approval to roll forward all, all the encumbrances, I'm sorry, roll forward the appropriation to support the payment of these open encumbrances. And that's all, you know, all expense accounts, not just the capital expenditures. Because again, the services and supplies are equally as important as the capital expenditures. And it also keeps it easier to understand where you don't have to get into explanations as to why we roll forward certain items and why we do not. So the total for this, for this request is approximately 5.4 million. And you can see above, at the top of the schedule, again, it's, it's, it's nothing out of the ordinary is what we're requesting to, to utilize the unexpended cash at the end of 2020. And the city did have a good, a good year on, in the general fund in particular, being able to generate a positive, a positive net revenue, even though, as you know, we were constrained by the pandemic, particularly in our parking system revenues. So our cash position is relatively strong. I mean, it's going to be, it's anticipated that we're going to need that as we go through 2021. But again, I think this request is, is consistent with prior years. And it does appear, appear reasonable to me. The, the bottom part of the schedule is just the various line items, starting with the general fund and, and proceeding on down through, through the remainder of the funds. The, the specific budget units are there along with the related expenditure accounts. And you can see at the bottom, the total of all the expend does equal to the cash carryover revenue piece at the top. So it, it, of course, is in balance. I'll stop right there. If anybody has any questions on this or to anything I just conveyed.
No, Brian, thanks for going through that. And just kind of as a way to further explain this to my colleagues. I feel like sometimes it's, it's confusing. But basically, we roll forward this just shy 5.4 million because it's bills that we still need to pay that are carryover from 2020 in many respects. Correct, Brian? That's a fair assessment?
Yeah, that, 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 that's correct, Ben. The, the idea, one, one thing I neglected to state is part of our year-end work, we send out reports of these open encumbrances to our various department heads and staff, and we ask them to confirm if need, if they need the purchase order to remain open or to, if not, we can close it. We waited a little bit longer this year to get closer to the final check run because it's very difficult. Until the final check run is processed, you really don't know what you're dealing with as far as what's remaining on, on any given purchase order. So we, we did that. We, we, we had a communication out to confirm what was needed. And that, that was the basis for deciding that there were certain balances that needed to be, to be rolled forward and then obviously impact 2021's budget.
Great, Brian. I'm going to open it up for questions from my colleagues because I don't have any, haven't been very familiar with this process. I will start with questions from the other end of the dais this time and begin with Councilmember Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Thank you both for your explanations.
Moving on to Councilmember Madsen.
Good question. Thank you.
Council President.
Just one. Brian, do we have a towing contract in place?
I'm sorry, President Williams, you, you cut out on me. That.
I said, at the present time, do we have a towing contract with anyone in place?
Oh, um, I, I want to say that Dawn's Towing, Dawn and Sons, but I'm not sure about that. That, that's the vendor that comes to mind, but, but I'm not aware of contract status.
Okay, so that's the only vendor we're using for the towing purposes, right? Because I see we have towing and it's, it's like $6,000 or $4,000. Could you, could you give me that information at a later date, not tonight, if you're not aware of what vendor we're using?
Yes, I can follow up on that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
That's all I have, Mr. Allitt.
Councilmember Majors.
Yes, the only question I have is, excuse me, the, the training budget, it looks like we're moving 40,000 for the police. Are they still, what, what classes are those going to be addressing? Or is that just continued courses that are currently, that haven't been taken by members of the police force?
That's, yes, Councilman Majors, that, that's coming out of the Police Protection Fund and that, that pertains to those, those police individuals that are attending the, the training at HAC. The Bureau of Police specifically requested the remaining balance to be rolled forward, anticipating that there would be related invoices to pay in, in the current month of January.
Okay. And then, and just so I'm clear, this includes all, 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 this is just wasn't money that needs to be paid? This isn't any balance that wasn't spent in 2021, just things that need to be paid that are carrying over?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, the, the anticipation that there was still, still something that needs to be paid that just wasn't able to make it to our final check round of 2020.
Of 2020. Okay.
Correct.
All right. A question that's not related to this resolution. So thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Wes. Councilmember Daniels.
Yeah, yeah, so, um. So this may be my failed memory, but I thought this was usually just an encumbrance. And I'm seeing the language used of adjusted budget after amendment. And I don't remember it being, that being the language. Was that the language that we've used in the past for those columns? The proposed amendment, adjusted budget after amendment.
Councilwoman Daniels, this is Tiffany Baldock. Um, yes, that is the language that we have used consistently over the years. And yes, and I think that language in the future, perhaps next year, we clean it, clean it up a little, you know, to actually reflect what is going on, but for consistency purposes. it up a little, you know, to actually reflect what is going on, but for consistency purposes, it was agreed that we would stick with the same language this year.
Okay. Yeah, that is, I couldn't remember what language we used before because I wanted to make sure that what we're saying is what we're, matches closely to what we're doing. Okay, so, so that's the only question. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Thanks for the explanation, Tiffany, as well. I have no further questions, and I can move this for a vote when we come back into session. Does anyone else have any other questions on Resolution 1 or 2, or shall I make a motion to go back into session? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to go back into session.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll be back in session. Mr. Petrowski? Did you call the vote for Resolution 1, 2021?
Sure. Calling the vote for Resolution 1 of 2021. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green? Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2, 2021. Would you please call the vote?
Calling the vote for Resolution 2 of 2021, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green? Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 2 passes.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. We now move on to Resolution 4, 2021. Would you please read it into record, Mr. Petrowski?
Yeah. Resolution 4 of 2021 is a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the City of Harrisburg 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan to incorporate new activities and funding to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic as provided for by the CARES Act.
That will be placed in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to Resolution 5 of 2021.
Resolution 5 of 2021 is a resolution approving the 2020 Annual Action Plan for the City of Harrisburg necessary to the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDVG Home Investment Partnership Program, the Home End Emergency Solutions Grants, grant ESG programs.
That also will be placed in Building and Housing Committee. We now move on to old business, council members, are there any old business? Moving on to new business, council members, are there any new business? Mr. Majors?
Yeah, I, I just previously just want to, well, first, I want to, you know, welcome everybody back. Happy New Year. And as President Allen said, you know, today will be the last day that we can say our country has not had a female vice president. So I just want to send a big congratulations to the incumbent administration. I know they have a lot on their plate as we're still in the middle of a pandemic. Want to encourage all of our, our residents to continue to wear their masks, practice the physical distancing. Our, our numbers while they're improving, it's, this is still a raging pandemic, and we want to ensure that folks stay safe. Additionally, as, you know, many in our city have seen, that there's a increased presence of not only law enforcement, but our National Guard. We want to thank all those who serve and are protecting our communities. So we want to encourage folks. I think a lot of folks have heard about the chatter on the internet of potential protests, which is why we're seeing this increased presence to, you know, if you can stay home and avoid the Capitol complex in that area, just so that we can keep our residents safe through this process, this transition of, of power. And just want to wish that incoming administration best wishes and to make sure our residents stay safe throughout tomorrow.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Majors. Anyone else?
President Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mattson.
Just wanted to give a quick update on the comprehensive plan and the upcoming hearings council will have in conjunction with the Planning Commission. Well, let's, we, over the break, I've been working with the Planning Commission and the administration on a tentative timeline. The dates we are looking at currently are February 17th, February 24th, and March 10th is just a benchmark, just to see where we're at at that point. And then we'll look and see how many additional hearings we may need and how to best process feedback and commentary from the, the public. So just wanted to let everyone know, those are the tentative dates. We're finalizing things in the next few days here, and we'll look to send that out to the public, but just wanted to give a quick update there.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Ms. Bowers?
Thank you, President Williams. Good evening again, everyone. I just wanted to note that City Council is actively addressing our housing crisis. You may remember, last year, we introduced a package, legislative package, including four bills to address affordable housing within the city of Harrisburg. I just wanted to note, please mark your calendars on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, and Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, we will host public hearings to discuss the legislative package further. So please, we welcome your feedback and your participation. That's February 2nd, 2021, and February 16th. So we look forward to seeing and hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Anyone else?
Just, sorry, President Williams. Council, Councilwoman Bowers reminded me, I think, and I definitely want to give our, our council and the mayor some credit as, as we all know, at the end of last year, City Council and the mayor approved an emergency order to halt evictions for, for folks. It looks like, you know, and the CDC extended it through January 31st of 2021, and it also looks like our incumbent administration, based on all the reporting that I've seen, one of their first matters that they want to take up by executive order is to continue and extend the halt on, on evictions for, for residents as we are currently in the middle of a global health pandemic. So we want to, you know, I think we all saw the writing on the wall and the importance of keeping folks in their, in their residence through this. So, you know, you know, we're going to encourage, I think we all want to encourage the incumbent administration and Congress to, to work on legislation to, to keep this going and to provide some additional relief to all of our folks that are struggling through this pandemic. So, you know, just for me, to everyone on council, I think, you know, and, and the mayor, we're, we're doing the right thing and trying to ensure people couldn't still have housing through this. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Anyone else, please? Mr. Allen, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Wes started talking, and it kind of reminded me. I actually do want just to send out a congratulations to someone from the Harrisburg community who has served our Commonwealth well, and that is Dr. Rachel Levine, who made history today, being nominated by Mr. Biden to be the Assistant Secretary of Health for the country. I have known Dr. Levine for many, many, many years and consider her a great friend. She served our Commonwealth well and throughout this pandemic as being a calming presence to all of us, and so thrilled that she'll be going to Washington, as much as I'm sad to see her leave the Commonwealth. But so proud to know her, so excited for her, and knowing that she has been a Harrisburg area resident for quite a long period of time. She loves this area. But congrats to her and wishing her so much success in Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Anyone else?
Madam President, I just wanted to say in light of Council Major's comments that we, we have extended the eviction moratorium for a second 30-day period that has just gone into effect. And as you may recall, it calls to be renewed every 30 days. So we are now in the second 30-day period.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, council members, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
You have a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Mattson. We need officially adjourned. Good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Have a good night.